Yes, sir.
You can hear.
You there?
Very good.
All right, no, good, good. All right, well, before we lose anyone again, let's go ahead and get started. And we'll begin our meeting like we always do with solemnizing prayer and the pledge. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Okay.
Lord, thank the privilege we've had to pray. We thank for any commissioners, Lord, and pray you give them the wisdom they need today, the hard work they've done on this budget, Lord, the tough times we live in. I pray you encourage your hearts and help them in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 All right, well, I've got a flag behind me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. Everyone. So we have budget workshop. The agenda is laid out in front of us. We don't have any changes to that. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda provided?
To most.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Okay, manager church.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I thought I would start the budget work session by just briefly going over the budget presentation that was shared recently again. And then after that, we'll open it up for discussion and question. Randy, if you'll go to the next page. Budget is balanced and prepared in accordance with the local government budget and fiscal control act. This budget is tight and conservative. The total budget that was presented to you was for one hundred and seventy-six million, four hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. The largest portion of of that is the general fund, which is recommended at a hundred and fifty-three million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars. The fire district fund, six million, six hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. There's no tax increase recommended in the fire district fund. Emergency telephone fund, five hun- five hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. One million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. The landfill fund, nine million, six hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Airport fund, five million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. And the water fund, thirty-six thousand dollars. The the current budget we're in, the recommended budget, million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. The requested for this coming year is two hundred and fifteen million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and two dollars. And the recommended amount is a hundred and fifty-three million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars, which is a six million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand and twenty-four dollar reduction or for four percent. The property take tax base, thirteen billion, seven hundred and sixty million is a three point three eight percent increase over last year. However, as we discussed previously, the collection rate were has decreased by one point two five percent. The recommended tax rate remains the same. The sales tax, rejected revenue is two million, five hundred thousand or nine point five percent decrease. Back when this was presented on May fifteenth, there was article written by Jeff Cox, the finance editor for CNBC dot com, called retail sales plunge a record sixteen point four percent in April, far worse than predicted. Next slide. Okay, so to to go over again, how we came up with with this this number, the sales tax for the first six months of fiscal year twenty twenty was six point six percent above the budget. And that prorated out is approximately twenty-eight million, forty thousand dollars. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the sales tax budget represents a twenty percent reduction for six months for the year and then a ten percent reduction six months from this amount or a nine point five percent reduction from the fiscal twenty twenty original budget. Next slide. So the adopted budget fund balance appropriation for two thousand twenty was eleven million, five hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The ten-year average, eight million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And the recommended fund balance appropriation for this year twenty twenty-one is recommended at six million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, which is a four million, seven hundred and sixty thousand and sixty-seven dollar increase or a forty-one point, I'm I'm not, I'm sorry, not increase, decree, which is a forty-one point three percent decrease. And this is a chart we showed on the adopted budget fund balance appropriation. Now, of course, to your far right, the one that's at the near the very bottom, that's not adopted, that's just the recommended. But you'll see how our fund balance appropriation has been over the last ten years. To highlight some of the continuation budget, there is a transfer recommended in this upcoming budget of one million, four hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. This should bring the total to approximately four million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the West End Plaza for capital. Expansion highlights, there were thirty-nine new positions requested. The the cost of those positions would have been one million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. The positions recommended were only two and the recommended cost was a hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. The recommended cola, there is zero. Next slide. Just a few of the expansion highlights here. I won't cover each one because we went up, we went over that. But Randy, if you care, the next slide. And the next slide. So the the two thousand twenty-one school funding for current expense for Rowan Salisbury Schools is a reduction of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Kannapla Schools is a reduction of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and five dollars. And Charter Schools is an increase of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars, which the the total increase to school funding based on the above numbers is three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. The local option, sales tax is estimated to decrease for for the school capital funding at a total of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As you'll see, Rowan Salisbury Schools, four hundred and twenty-one thousand and twenty-two dollars is their estimated reduction based on the projected sales tax. And the Kannapla City School is negative twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Again, this is just an estimate if sales tax comes in better than than we've projected, then their their revenue would increase.
Hey, Aaron, Randy, will you go back one slide, one more? Just for folks that that might be watching this, these numbers, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, a reduction of twenty-four thousand, and then charter schools increased to seven forty-seven. These are a result of the estimates of what the school enrollment will be. Thank you, Randy. And so that they get a per pupil allotment. So th- this is just the the pupil estimates times the the per pupil allotment, and this is what the math works out to. And in the the paragraph there that he had, it's anticipated charter schools will gain three hundred and ninety-one students. That's why there's a big increase there. And the next slide, just so folks understand, Article forty and forty-two are their their tax revenues and those tax revenues move up and down as sales taxes increase and decrease. So based on the estimates, this is, so so this isn't the county cutting these. These are dedicated tax revenues set up by the legislature that goes directly into these into these tax revenues. So this is, this is again an estimate.
And if a if a charter school closed down, those students, and let's say they went to the school sys- to the public school system, then that money would just follow a child as it does in these cases here.
By by month, yeah, they don't, they don't pay for the whole year. They don't give a charter school a whole year. They they do it month by month. So if they left and went to public school, then the the following month, that money would follow, but not necessarily that that day, I don't think.
Okay, in in the recommended budget, for two thousand twenty-one, there there is no new debt service for any additional debt commitments for Rowan Salisbury Schools. Kannapla City Schools or Rowan Cameris Community College. All plans to build any new school facilities will be suspended if this budget is adopted as presented. This includes all architectural and engineering design. And just a summary statement, again, the budget is tight and conservative. If the projected sales tax revenue is overstated, a property tax increase will be required in fiscal year twenty twenty-two to maintain the current services recommended in this budget. And that is the end of the presentation. And if if the board wants me to start off the discussion, I'll be glad to do that. Commissioner, a commissioner asked me to include a an appropriation for Crime Stoppers in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. And that that was not included in the budget.
Mr. Manager, I have a question about some of the, as I went through the budget, I noticed we still have the fairgrounds listed in in our in our different objects here, and and I question why that's still there since they have paid their debt to the county and the county, this is no longer a county department. Should we include this in our budget anymore?
Yeah, you're talking about the tab that says Fairground six, six-two-five-oh. Yeah, the the main, the main reason for that is, you know, this will continue to show until all the zeros are gone. So it just, you know, in order for the at the very end of the budget for for the actual two thousand eighteen budget to add up as well as the two thousand nineteen actual, the year to date and the original budget and the revised for all those columns to add up, you know, when you take the book in in its whole, that's why it's in there. Does that make sense?
It does, but I needed some clarification because I still have citizens ask me, why aren't we spending money at fair? And I keep trying to make them explain that we don't own it anymore. So this is just a little bit confusion for somebody that would look at the budget online and say, well, you still got a line item in here for the fairgrounds. Thought you didn't own it. So that was why I was asking.
Okay.
So one thing I'll I'll be asking the commissioners to consider. We've been working now for a couple of years on rural broadband infrastructure. And we got Randy on here, so Randy, just mute me if I start saying something wrong. So we've, we've been through a big study where we've sent out questionnaires, we've identified hotspots, we've done a lot of technical work. We brought in providers from across the whole spectrum. And so what we what we learned was that your large providers, to to the large providers, density is everything. If they're going to run hardwired cable, they need to run it down a city block with a with a hundred houses on it in order to to make it work for them financially. Once you get out into the county, that becomes a problem because you may have just one citizen that's got a gravel driveway a mile off the road. And so running that cable down there, down that one road alone is cost prohibitive. So we've really turned to, through all of this study in realizing at least with current knowledge, current information we have that wireless, some type of wireless solution is going to be the best solution to start hitting those dead spots in Rowan County. So we've been talking with some wireless organizations. So the the North Carolina, North Carolina has provided some grant dollars in order for us to be able to attract companies here to bring broadband. And those dollars have been rolled out by tier, tier one, tier two, Randy, is there four of them, tier three, tier four?
I think there's three and they're just in tier one at the moment.
So they've been working now for the past couple of years through tier one. And so all of the information we had was that tier two, which we are, that this is based on your community's economic position. So those those poorest communities were tier one and they've been serviced first. We are next. And so all of the data information we were given was that tier two would open up July one of this year. Well, now we've just found that they have have provided additional funding, the legislature has, and they're keeping tier one opening in and kind of doing another round through tier one, and that's delaying the tier two. So we've been, we've been waiting for tier two and telling folks July one was our time, and now that is going to be pushed back. So our question became, do we continue to wait on something that may not, you know, that we don't know what the timeframe is, or do we begin to to try to help help folks out? So again, talking with some wireless broad broadband companies, they are, they are all very busy now serving tier one customers because that's where the grant dollars are. But we've talked to some and asked them, what if the county gave you some type of financial incentive to not wait until the broadband funds came down? We need, we need to move now or or sooner rather than later. And so what we're going to be asking for is there some indication that if we incentivize them, they would, they would be willing to to move ahead even though we're, you know, the broadband folks aren't servicing tier two communities yet. So I'm going to be asking that we provide a fifty thousand dollar, I don't know what we call it, fund to be determined. But and so Randy and his broadband group would come together, they'd put out what an RFI, Randy, to begin to, now that we're focused on where the area is and what type of technology we're looking for. And those would be some matching funds where a broadband company would come in and say, we're willing to invest in Rowan County. And Rowan County would say, well, we're willing to provide some incentive for you to move ahead here. It appears that the target would be the Scotch Irish area. That's for a lot of, a lot of reasons. That's a, that's a an area that's in great demand. They're, they're hurting over there for some type of quality broadband. You got a lot of farms in those areas now that are working with very with with really high-tech equipment that needs a signal as they continue to produce out there. Another reason is, is there's, there are towers out in that area that are available for a type of wireless broadband to contract with that can shoot out over the landscape. And so that's a good thing. But the other thing is if if you're picking which is the first area to go and you're listing all the the different areas and the reasons to go to certain areas, that that area, they would put equipment on that tower that would really be used as a hub and spoke type of situation where they can then shoot from that tower and then reach other future towers that we would set up. But that really becomes the hub that can shoot out across the county. So we've got to, we've got to do this right. We've got to go through requests for information and all that. That'll come through the Wireless Broadband Committee that we helped set up a couple of years ago. They'll make a recommendation and come to us. But again, continuing to wait for the state of North Carolina, that's a choice we can make, I suppose. But one of the things I think this group needs to do is just go ahead and move ahead. There's some question as to whether if we go ahead and invest, once we're in tier two, could we be reimbursed by those dollars? We don't know that. We don't know that answer, but that is certainly a question we have. But a fifty thousand dollar investment would be really, really the first to get us moving here in Rowan County for rural broadband. Randy and Aaron have called around other communities that are using wireless broadband providers, and they are having very good success. So again, they'll, they'll put out that RFI, bring it back to us, and we'll make a decision at that time. I just wanted to put a fifty thousand dollar place marker in there for us that'll be available should they come back to us with a solution. So are there any questions on that?
Yeah, I'd like to get on whether we could get reimbursed because I really don't feel like this is the county's position because this will be privately owned and it'll be for profit for them. And I don't think it's fair for us to be the one that's providing this incentive for to a for-profit company. It's just, it's just not right. Not when the state's got funds available for it and all we got to do is wait on it. If if we can't get reimbursed, I can't, I can't be in favor of this. That's just my personal opinion.
Well, this not, this not only, yeah, this not only serves the public, but it also serves fire stations, EMS, all of that type of stuff. So it would, it would be valuable to us, even as a county.
Greg, if I recall right, we were talking at one point about putting a new tower, a Rowan Tower out there because of emergency services. And another reason was is because the private-owned tower out there was like going to charge an arm and a leg to allow the company to hook up to their tower. It has that discussion gone away or where are we?
No, that's a good question. That's really been a separate discussion. That's been a nine-one-one discussion. And so that is, that is still, that is still a planning issue. And in these discussions, they have still talked about that nine-one-one tower, but it's not, it's not built yet. So again, we wait, 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 or the the private companies just go to the tower owners that are currently there and they work out a lease. And then as Rowan County builds its nine-one-one infrastructure, could be that tower. I I don't know that there's plans for others, but any other towers that we may build in the future. And again, there's, I'm not saying there's discussion on that. I'm just saying if we did, then those would become available as well. The kind of, they're related issues, Judy, but there's planning going on on the nine-one-one side, and this is a a different discussion. But they they share equipment, and so it's important to to get that right.
Going back to Craig's question about reimbursement, have we had any discussions with the state on that topic?
So it's, no, I mean, it's just questionable because we would be going. But but one thing that we did learn is that when these grants come out, that it doesn't mean that Rowan County would qualify for the grant. It's like everything else, they're competitive. But if the state sees that we went out ahead and started investing ourselves, then that shows the state that we have, we show value in rural, rural infrastructure, rural internet. And we have been told very clearly that that would help us as we begin to apply for future grants.
Great, thanks.
Well, we've also talked about the coronavirus money that has come in. And I still think as important as broadband is to students at home that are learning are having classes.
are, are having classes online for safety of folks, um you know, you talk about uh nine one one, uh, that it, it just overlaps into so many areas. Uh, I'd like to see us uh get a clarification from the state about that money and whether it would be available or not.
Yeah, that, that's been a, a big discussion, Jim, and, and I know Aaron and Randy spoke with uh leaders from other communities who, there was a rumor they were considering that. Someone also talked to us about uh possibly uh applying for a Golden Leaf Grant, uh, but not so much for rural internet, but for um, for a tower, a- again, back to Judy's discussion. Uh, the, the, the tower serves a whole lot of purposes, safety, nine one one, uh EMS, fire, and here rural broadband, so that may be something that we look at. Uh, not to provide uh rural internet, but uh, there is a county, I think, that got a uh Golden Leaf Grant for uh, for tower construction, is what we understand. But, but the, the other thing, it's, it's just one of those that's um right on the line, Jim. And when the Commissioners are responsible for reimbursing that fifty grand, uh, that, that's something that I think makes everyone nervous, and so at the advice of our county manager, uh, after he has spoken with other uh county managers, didn't seem like that was a risk worth taking.
Well, and, and there's somebody with the state that we could get it, uh, clarification from?
That's, that's, I think that's something we, we talked about, Aaron, um, any comments on that?
You know, we, we can't, we can definitely um uh a- ask the state that that they have an office um that handles those requests, and we can certainly a- a- ask the question.
Yeah, let, let's plan on doing that. You know, and, and the last thing is, some of you, you know, I know I have over the time I've served, gotten calls from folks who run businesses out in these areas, so I don't see it as much different as a business incentive, but also an economic development issue as well as safety and all that. We do have businesses operating out here that, that uh, that need um better than what they have. Remember talking with a young man who just graduated from S- uh NC State, and he came home to that area and wanted to uh start a, do a startup business there, but wasn't able to because of the lack of uh broadband utility, so um, he opted instead to move, and that was unfortunate. So, uh, Aaron, I don't know what we do here, if I just um uh make a motion to do that, and then uh just as a placeholder, and then we'll run our uh process of uh going through committee uh with the broadband committee and the RFI RFQ process, and then it would come back to us for recommendation. Um, so what would you have me do?
Yes, so, you know, if you're wanting it added to the budget, I mean, we can add that to the list of, of things to add, um, and then after the budget's approved, you know, we'll move through with the, the procurement process.
Okay. Do I need, uh, do I need to make a motion and get the approval of, of uh this for it?
Not, not necessarily, because the budget is, is, you know, um
Voted in total?
Yeah, voted in total, so if, it, you know, if it's something that um yeah, that the board, you know, is okay with including the, the, the money in the budget, um you know, you, you, we can just add it, and then when you adopt the budget, you can adopt it with the discussed amendments, you know. There is um, I want to say seventy thousand dollars in a contingency line item. So, if they're, you know. Yeah, there, there's seventy thousand dollars in a contingency line item, so, so as long as the um, the changes to the budget aren't over seventy thousand, then there we wouldn't need to even change the, the fund balance appropriation or, or, or anything, we could just reallocate um, the fifty thousand from contingency to a new li- line item for broadband, and then you know, the fifteen hundred uh dollars to cr- to Crime Stoppers. Now, you know, you know, just because it's added to the budget doesn't mean that, you know um, you know, you still have to go through the procure, procure, the procurement process and all that, so it doesn't necessarily mean that um
It happens.
That it happens, it's just, you know, adding it to the budget.
Aaron, wouldn't that give us time possibly to find out from the state if there's a chance to reimbursement on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, you know, big projects, stuff like this, I mean, you can budget it, but then, you know, just like we have the West End Plaza Capital, just because it's budgeted, doesn't, you know, the board's gonna have to vote for, for the way it's spent, so it'd be the same thing with the broadband.
Yeah.
Money, I mean, you probably, you know, vote three or four times, you know, vote to do the um, uh, the request for information, vote to approve it, you know, vote to select company, then approve the contract, and you know.
All right, thanks, um, anyone else have anything else they wanna bring up in the budget? All right, well, we've got this one, we will adjourn, um, but then we've got a three o'clock meeting uh that we will recess until six. So, we look forward to seeing you back then, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Oh.
Adjourn or recess?
No, we'll adjourn this one, this is just a
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll gavel.
I move, we adjourn.
All right, we have motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Randy, would you leave this link up so I don't have no trouble signing?